Okay, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order of the school committee 1,682. Standing reports, approval of the school committee minutes, excuse me, of 1681. Can I have a motion from somebody?
School committee meeting number 1681.
Does anybody have any questions? Nancy, you good?
Yes.
And who else is up there?
Stephanie.
Stephanie?
I'm good.
Okay.
Questions?
Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
I have no question.
All right, roll call vote. Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Bonnie?
Yes.
And Arthur, yes. Okay, our student representative and our student spotlight.
Shall we skip that? There is none.
Okay, there is no receipt of correspondence. Now I'll get to the student representative report, student spotlight. They're going to be here a little bit later, so we're going to come back to that when they come. So everybody that's going to speak tonight, you'll have three minutes, and there will be no discussion afterwards.
Don't worry about the money. It's anywhere fine, it's very sensible.
We got nice posters.
Good evening, my name is Amy Murray. I've worn many different hats in this district, from teacher to alumni, parent as my boys have graduated. But tonight, I'm standing before you as an officer of the Southern Berkshire Regional Education Association, and the message that I'm delivering has the support of more than 90% of our members who have signed the letter that I'm going to read to you. So, school committee members, we respectfully ask that you work cooperatively with the members of the Southern Berkshire Regional Education Association in negotiating a fair contract. We ask you to consider the priorities that I'm going to outline, which will enable us to meet the best needs of our district's students and their families. So first, we're asking for sustainable and equitable working conditions, including fair preparation time policies and high-quality professional development opportunities. Next, we're looking for equitable and compassionate leave policies, including adequate time leave for all educators that will allow us to be healthy in mind and body to support our students, ourselves, and our families. We ask for respect and autonomy to make these personal decisions. Our third request is for fair and adequate compensation, including a living wage for food service staff and paraprofessionals, a competitive salary scale to recruit and retain educators, and compensation for the extra duties that support student enrichment. Our bargaining platform, which you're going to find attached to folders that I have that we'll hand out after, is rooted in one common demand from the educators across our district, and that's respect. We are calling on the school committee to ensure that educators are provided professional autonomy, resources in the classroom, common courtesy from our district's administration. We are united in our desire to work collaboratively with our administration and our school committee, and we are asking you to uphold that same commitment. So respectfully, I'm here not just representing myself, the amount of people that are on the Zoom link behind me, as well as standing behind me, just represent how united we are in this process to negotiate a fair contract, and that we want what's best for the district. Thank you. Just need to stop here, but to go to the letter of signatures and for the people who are not here.
Mr. Vatage? No, I don't know how to say your last name.
Vatage.
Mr. Vatage, um, I don't, I'm not really great at Zoom, but it's Marie Caden's from Sanusfield, and may I just make a comment on the budget?
Yes, you may.
Um, having worked in that field for many, many years, I am hopeful that now that you're undergoing hiring a new business manager, the budget will be more, I found it very difficult to go through, and that's my field of expertise. I, I think I understand that you need to do a five-year budget, or you want to look at a five-year budget, but what was posted today on the website isn't, it's just a couple of years. I think for a normal parent or layperson, it just might be a little confusing. For example, there's a line in the budget that's for music and states Mr. Clark, and I know that it's from 2020, and I don't know if there's any way that you can delete those items that are no longer in existence. I, personally, I just think it's not helpful, and, um, I think it would be, I got through it, it took me a very, very long time to get through it, though. So I'm hoping that maybe there's an easier budget mechanism out there that you can use so that everybody can understand what they're looking at. I did, but I know there were parents who called me who totally didn't get it, and there were pieces I didn't get, I'm going to admit, especially the lines that said zero, zero, zero. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We have somebody with an iPhone.
I'm sending them a direct message, maybe they'll notice that it's them.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Oh, it just says iPhone. This is Tony Blom, how are you?
Inkstained.
Sarah Sickett from Sheffield. Every year I come in and I ask for the same thing about the school calendar, and that would be a committee before a draft is published to look at, where we all sit down and come up with days. But I'm here actually today to share a comment that students made today, which I thought was really interesting, when they said, "It's funny that we have half-days on a Thursday and Friday after ski season instead of during," and I said to them, "You all should send that comment in." But in case they don't, I thought I would. I also thought I'd share a comment that a parent made when I was picking my kids up from an event, and that was, "How come we have half-days the week after a vacation? Do they not realize that we just had to take a week off or plan for childcare for five days for our kids, and then the next Wednesday, right after we have a vacation, we have a half-day?" So I just wanted to point out that we, this year, started committees to talk about the cell phone policy, we started a committee for attendance, but we don't talk about the calendar in advance of putting out a draft. And so I will respectfully ask again, like I do every year, that we put a committee together and we ask about those things before we create a draft, particularly in our issues of childcare and how many half-days we have and where we put them. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, business managers report.
Most do approve of the March 20th warrant.
One line, yes, it's one line.
It's 6A.
It's just one line.
One line.
Nancy seconded.
Yep. Anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to check that it's only for the entitlement?
Yes, because we just did, we had the meeting last week.
A bunch of other things.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Stephanie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
Why not Carl?
I didn't see you there, Carl. Okay, Carl.
Yes.
Any grants or gifts or budget transfers?
No.
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Chairman's report. So we have a play coming up tomorrow night. I'm sure that it's going to be fascinating, as everything that we put on here, and I hope that everybody who hasn't been to a play, or goes to most everything here, like I do, can go there and attend. So, uh, that's it for me. Yep, go ahead.
Outside the play, there will be raffle prizes set up, sponsored by the eighth-grade class, and raffle tickets for sale to help pay down the costs, the students, to go to Washington, D.C. So not only enjoy a show, but help our eighth grade out.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, superintendent's report.
So just to, that was going to be at the end of my report, but our surprise student spotlight and student representatives are going to be members of the theater department, who is putting on Little Shop of Horrors, coming in and doing a little advertisement as soon as they finish their run-through, so we'll be looking forward to that. On Monday, March 24th, at 11:00 a.m. at UMass in Amherst, I'm hoping to join my colleagues and some members of the school committee as the FY26 Joint Ways and Means Budget Hearing happens. It's focused on local aid and rural aid and advocacy for it, and it was advised that people actually show up in person to help emphasize the need to fairly fund our school districts. So that is happening Monday. Last night, we had a fabulous design team meeting, which is part of our Transcend Community Group, and out of that, at this point, we have, the community is actually leading four groups, four teams. One is on mentorship and internships, one is on communication, one is on the establishment of a foundation or an endowment, and one is on community mapping. So they are all led by community members, non-administration, non-school committee, members of our community who have been volunteering their time over the last several years, and they're going to be looking for additional people to join them in the work. So I will continue to send out more detail about what those four groups are doing, and if you can think of somebody else who would like to be a part of it, or if you would like to be a part of it yourselves, please feel free to reach out and join any of those teams. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Professional Development.
I had mentioned, I think at our last meeting, that I was working on the review survey for our SOA, which is our Student Opportunity Act. I will give you the presentation on that in April, as that review is due at the beginning of April. For today, I'm just going to share with you a little bit about what we had going on. Today was a half-day of PD. We had many, many moving parts. We had MCAS training, we had some people on a special security training, we had our coach Holly Reardon in town from Transcend, working with our Studio Pathway Group, we had our coach Lori Casna, who's a retired superintendent, working with our Universal Design for Learning Group, we had Ken Knox from Bar College, working with those teachers who are working to get certified as early college teachers. I spent my afternoon working with Sarah Halloran, who is from TNTP and grant-funded coach for ELA. We had the pleasure of working with middle school ELA teachers and had a very productive afternoon doing some backward design planning for their next unit. So I haven't had a chance to talk to other people yet, but it was a successful day.
Thank you. Director of Student Services.
Good evening. You've got it there, cut off the presses. And I just wanted to start by saying I always want to thank you all for being so thoughtful about asking questions when we submit these reports. It's really appreciated how engaged you are in what we do. We had a meeting on Tuesday, a department meeting, and we had Samantha from MassAbility, formerly MRC or Mass Rehab Commission, join us on our meeting on Tuesday, and it was fantastic. She was talking about the services that they offer to students who are starting and in the midst of transitioning to post-secondary planning, and she is going to be coming to us once a month and spending a couple of hours here to have availability to our students and staff and families. And she will be attending IEP meetings, and just the wealth of resources, and I put them here in my report, and you can take a look at it, is really amazing, and they certainly, they have funding available for certain services, and it was great to hear from her and learn a bit more about the changes that they've made now that they've turned into MassAbility. We did have some other trainings today that were fantastic, and I was down in the pre-kindergarten program, and we were talking today about a new, well, it's not official diagnosis, but something new within the autism spectrum disorder, which is called pathological demand avoidance. And we did, we're just kind of learning about it and seeing how the strategies that they talk about in, in working with young children might impact our work with kids. So we're just starting to learn about it again. It's not an official diagnosis, but I don't know if you've heard about it, it's being talked about a lot right now. So that was terrific, and we had an opportunity to share some, some of our little personal thoughts and expertise, and we're going to do a pre-K potluck next time, so I'm looking forward to that. We have some people that have some real skills in there. I'm looking forward to the shrimp scampi from Jen Rossi. We're finishing up our MCAS alternative portfolios. I wrote some details in there about that, so our students that have particular disabilities don't take the MCAS in traditional way, they work on portfolios throughout the year, and those have to be submitted by next Friday, so those are getting wrapped up right now, and it's labor-intensive and a long process, and really want to say thank you to the staff and faculty who've been working on that, and to our kids who are really showing all that they can learn in a various settings. And we have our mental health screenings that are coming up, we're going to be targeting various grade levels again, I'll give you more details on that, I know our clinical, our mental health team met today to talk about the steps for that. And I just wanted to mention that Special Olympics are approaching, they're coming up soon. Yeah, I know, May 7th. It's hard to believe that they're coming up that soon, but I'll keep you updated on that, but please keep it in mind, May 7th at Monument Mountain. Happy spring, good spring, yes.
Can you either give me the elevator pitch of what this new diagnosis is?
Diagnosis, but being talked about a lot.
Or can you send me someplace where I could learn more?
Sure, why don't I send you the links that we had today?
Perfect.
Because I think you'll find it interesting. Jim, have you heard about it?
Could you send them to me, too?
Absolutely.
Put that in the chat, can you put that in the chat, Jenny?
Sure. I'll, I'll do it right now. I'm on it. Thank you.
New business, adoption of the FY26 operating, transportation, and capital budgets. We have to read the complete motion with the budget figures.
I move that we approve the FY26 operating, transportation, and capital budget as follows. FY26 budget, operating expenditure budget, $17,714,391. Transportation expenditure budget, $2,311,691. Capital expenditure budget, $339,000. Capital project bond repayment, $308,550. The total expenditure budget, $20,673,631. FY26 assessment, assessments, operating assessment, $14,532,746. Capital assessment, $339,000. Capital project assessment, $308,550.
I know my part is real hard.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none? Yep, go ahead.
I just, I want to comment that I know Beth has done an enormous amount of work in trying to get information that we need and having it all together, but as a member of the Finance Committee, I was just really disappointed that we couldn't get it soon enough to actually ask questions during our meetings and do what we need to do. Getting information posted yesterday was difficult, it's been very busy two days, I've not dived into or dove into everything I need to look at. And I'm very torn, because I think that this is a very reasonable budget for the towns. I really do. I, you know, to know the conditions, the inflation, the healthcare, and everything that is out there, it's amazing to me that this budget is less than 5%. It's absolutely amazing to me, and I, you know, hope the towns will agree with that. We had a very difficult budget hearing last, a few days ago, and the one thing that we did not hear is any town official coming to challenge the numbers. We didn't hear any of that. All of the challenges had to do with the process, and that was very, very difficult. I've talked to Art, and I said, "Can we please debrief Finance Committee? I don't want to wait till January of next year to meet again, that's not okay." There's a lot of work to do to figure all of that out. And I know we can do a better deal together. Beth, I know you were, you know, really upset when we left the other night. I went home feeling kind of attacked, too, because I'm on that committee, and I felt like I was not doing my due diligence. I didn't, I, I mean, I was asking questions, but I was asking questions maybe not during the meetings, but I'd say, "What about this? When do we see the whole budget?" And things did not transpire the way they were. But I felt like the inquiry, the request for the transparency, it came to all of us, not just to you. I don't feel like you should bear that burden alone. It came to all of us to do that. So I just wanted to state that. Before we take our vote, you know, I do think the numbers are solid, I think the process was extremely difficult.
Anyone else?
Just a brief.
Go ahead. Yep.
Having gone through this for a number of years, and studiously, except for one time, avoided being on Finance Committee because of being number-challenged, I think we have to recognize, and this is not pandering, we have to recognize how fortunate we are in that we have someone who is our superintendent, who has lived numbers for most of her professional career, has received awards, not only locally, not only the Commonwealth, but nationally for the work that she does. What I did learn, and I only attended one of this year's, I'm not on that committee, just to get a sense of it all, what I have learned is there are so many incredible moving parts. And that what happens, and what I've seen again and again, is, let's say, a principal will put in for a certain project, but I'll say he, because it's both he's, that what they'll do is they'll step back because something else takes the priority. So what happens is, it, our budget is not, thankfully, it's not locked in at a point. Each time we go, we hear new information from the state, we're facing the fact we're not going to get real numbers until one in April, one in June. We're really faced with pressures, and I have somebody who constantly questions things. I believe we've been given the information, and remember, two major variables that we still don't have, is we're in the middle of negotiating, and we have the whole issue related to the cost of transportation. And we still don't have the state saying we're going to buy in at the level we need. So I totally understand, because I will go, you know, through that, that long version, and I know we would like to have more earlier, but in some cases, we absolutely can't have it earlier, because it really is a moving part. And I understand totally and appreciate your dedication to doing your due diligence. Hopefully, everybody is doing his or her due diligence. But I think at the same time, we have to give credit to Beth and her team putting together a budget, always driven by, if I don't hear it enough, the towns and what they could deal with. And that's been driving us. And fortunately, we've been hearing good things from our towns in terms of where we're heading, in terms of preparing the budget. I, you know, if we could, Julie, if you come up with others, we come up with a process that works in terms of more process, I'm sure a lot of us, you know, would, would work towards it. So, but I feel at this point, the work that went into this is pretty incredible, and the amount of, I apologize for calling Beth a couple of times in the week, it's just, I'm just doing the budget, you're not interrupting, you know, anything else. So that's my comment. I appreciate totally what you're saying, I understand your professionalism in this. And I also can say, in some cases, I've had to live with what I can't know, because nobody knows that number. Thank you.
I would like to echo the same thing. It's been, I've been doing this for a long time, and this year was the most frustrating budget season, or one of the most frustrating budget seasons that we have. And this year was the most frustrating budget season, or one of the most frustrating budget seasons that we have. But I truly believe that the budget that's being put before us tonight is a really good budget, and I hope that we can all support that. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Jim.
Hi. Well, I looked at, the first thing we were presented on Finance Committee. I looked at the second thing. I looked at what's posted online, and I looked at the Excel sheet. And I just went through in the last couple of days, the 579-line budget to look at. Every time I had a question, the question was answered. I went line by line, I looked. There were some things I saw, hmm, you know, could be cleaned up a little, like blank spaces and stuff like that, but they could be placeholders. I'm not an expert. But I think what bothers me the most is the misinformation that has been floating around, creating like a toxic atmosphere with this budget season. And even if you wanted to delve into it and ask questions, I think people are afraid to ask questions. And I think they should be able to ask questions because I have never been said, no, I'm not going to answer that. So I don't see what the issue is with the budget. Just ask a question if you don't understand. That's all I'm going to say.
I can agree, but it's the timing. We can't have the line-by-line budget the day before we're voting to adopt. That's the problem. So that's when I talk about process. If we could have had whatever it was that put together that information, had a Finance Committee where we could go through and ask line-by-line items, questions. I want to be the biggest cheerleader of this district I can possibly be. But I can't do that without the tools and the information. That's what's really difficult, and I really want to do that.
I didn't see, I saw everything on one spreadsheet that transferred to a different spreadsheet. There wasn't, I didn't really notice a difference. I noticed the way they were set up was different. And that's the only real notice. It's just we went from this to like a shorter version.
There was more detail in it.
Yeah.
And it included central office and included salaries.
Oh, yes, the top half, the lower half, I was saying.
Oh, no, there's parts of it, there are absolutely, number for number, line by line.
The grants and stuff came in, and I totally agree with that, that financial stuff.
But we should be able to see everything with ample time to review and discuss. That's all. That's all.
And I will.
I just.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Sorry, Art, I didn't mean to speak over you. I definitely am with Julie on this one, but I'm also with the rest of the group. I understand that these are good numbers and that the percent of increase is admirable. Beth, you probably worked some sort of miracle to make this happen, and I definitely recognize the work that's gone into it. As a new committee member and a new Finance Committee member, it's a steep learning curve for some of us. A lot of you have been on this board a really long time, and this is muscle memory for you, and for some of us, it's not. And Kim, thank you for mentioning that sometimes it's really hard to ask questions, and questions are not always well-received. And sometimes you feel stupid for asking them, so you become reluctant to ask questions. So I certainly own my part of this if I didn't ask questions where they were appropriate. But I will also say that in order to ask intelligent questions, you need time to prepare. So I agree with Julie completely. One of the areas that we can improve is setting some sort of parameters around a 24 to 48-hour notice with documents like this when it's 500 and something lines. I would recommend that it be at least 48 hours. Most of us are balancing full-time jobs, families, and our responsibilities on the school committee. It's a lot. We want to be able to make informed decisions. We want to be able to understand what goes into this. We want to be able to understand the numbers and have the time to ask the questions. Three Finance Committee meetings for me were not enough to understand this and in good conscience buy into this. So, you know, it's not personal. It's just from my personal standpoint, my integrity of my work, I don't understand everything, and I can't get behind it. So we just need to do better with documentation coming earlier and when it's asked for.
Yep. Bonnie?
I'd like to make the suggestion that after we adopt this budget, hopefully in a few minutes, that you hold, you know, another Finance Committee meeting and lay out what the members think. This, I think Stephanie's point of being a really new person, I mean, that's how I wound up, though not serving on it, going to the meeting so I could understand as much as I could what's going. So I think if your Finance Committee and you've got a combination of experienced as you are, and is Carl on your finance?
No.
So you have a preponderance.
Oh, Nancy, sorry, Nancy.
You have a preponderance of newer people. And I think, you know, drawing upon them, a sensitivity of what they like. Because nobody should feel by asking a question that in any way, you know, that they're getting attacked. And I think it's, if you hold that kind of meeting, and there may be things that will not be possible, given the nature of how we receive information. But Julie, I think, you know, you've had experience in another capacity. But now looking in terms of school committee, all right, we rely on the Finance Committee. And if you, and, and now Stephanie's saying, you don't feel the security, but you want to feel that security. I go back, my suggestion is, Art, while it's fresh in everyone on your committee's mind, to hold a meeting and lay out what you would like and then present it to the full school committee. I don't know how those of you in Finance feel about it, but that's something that I would think would be beneficial. Well, good. Thank you.
Nancy has her hand up.
Who?
Nancy.
Nancy?
Bonnie, thanks for making that request. I, I agree that I think that, I think this second one is really good. I've thought through several budgets now. I do understand the process and how Beth, you know, how Beth puts things together. I was understanding how much effort goes into it. But I think that the idea of everybody working together, trying to work the way it works, everybody feel comfortable. And also to voice, voice what works and what may not work, and same for Beth, to be able to respond would be great. It would be helpful because I would like to not see this being a issue in the future. I'd be for my head committee for the school committee or for the town's, because it's a great budget. I'd like everybody to do it, look at everybody.
Kim?
The only outlier we do have to keep in mind is our timeline's great. We can come up with one, but we're relying on other people. And so they have to agree and help us obtain that timeline. And I think a lot of the issues is the back and forth, the moving parts, that it wasn't quite kept up in time, in real time, for us to get this stuff.
Can I call, may I call the question? I'm calling the question.
Okay. Jim? Bonnie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Carl?
Yeah, if he answers, yeah, I, I, I do it, I don't know how that happens. Yeah?
Stephanie?
Epstein.
Nancy?
Yes.
Julie?
Because I know that this budget has votes to move forward, I actually asked Art, would you, would you please make sure I'm last? Because I want this budget to go to the town. But because I know that there are enough votes for this to move forward, I am abstaining.
And I'm yes. So it's one, two, three, four, five. Did I call any?
Yep.
Five, six, seven, two? Okay.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Reschedule of the date for the school committee walkthrough?
I think you.
Did we do that?
Well, you proposed a time. I just don't know if within the, since our last meeting, they've, they've reached out, so we'll just follow up on that.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee, I think we've heard enough about this for one night.
I don't know if this is the right time under unfinished business, or maybe it should be under future. So help me do that. We didn't finish voting on the school committee goals. We were supposed to bring them back. And I just realized they didn't show up under unfinished.
No, we will put that in the next.
Do it for next time. Okay, very good.
Community Relations, Nancy?
In progress.
Policy Subcommittee, Carl?
Excuse me. We had our second meeting with Liz Lepond of MASC on Monday night. It was approximately a two-hour meeting. I think it was very productive, but we have a ways to go. We have two meetings scheduled for April, and we're pressing on. And when we're finished, and we don't know when that will be, when we're finished going through the entire policy manual, we have to think of a way of presenting it in a, what's the word I'm looking for? Well, we have to think of a way of presenting it to the full committee so that it is not overly burdensome in terms of, mainly in terms of time. Can I, can I make a point? That's my report on the Policy Subcommittee. But can I make, I think I'm correct on this, the point on, on, on the budget. But I think it's important, and I don't want us to, to make a mistake on this. I believe that Bonnie called the question on discussion of the budget. The vote that followed that is, in my view, and although on relatively rusty, or mostly rusty, on Robert's rules, that was the vote on calling the question. It wasn't the vote on the budget. And, and I don't want this meeting to conclude without there being a vote on the budget. And so far, I don't believe there has been.
He's right, and I would have voted yes for calling the question. He is absolutely correct.
Okay. We may want to retake, Carl's right, may want to retake the vote on call the question because we have one person already who said she would have had a different vote. So just read that.
Right.
My motion was to call the question.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Jim?
So now what?
You're calling on the question.
Thank you, Carl.
Yes.
Bonnie? Kim? Miguel? Julie? Stephanie?
She may not realize what she.
Yeah, Stephanie was muted.
Sorry, I must have said yes before I needed, yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay, now.
All right, so back to my original motion, which was that long thing I read on all the numbers.
And I seconded.
And, and Kim had the unfortunate second.
Jim? We're voting on the budget again.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Epstein.
Carl?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Epstein.
Julie, or Nancy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment on policy?
Sure.
If any of you can, I stayed for about a half hour of their meeting. And I think it, it's a good way to see money well-spent. They were getting through policies in one session that would have taken us forever. And if you go, you know, don't, you don't even have to stay for the whole meeting, but you get a sense of what MASC has done for us. We're paying for it. But that they're taking every one of our policies and they're lining it up with MASC current policies. They're showing on paper discrepancies, if there are any. And they're also noting when it's a SBRSD policy and not an MASC. So you really learn a lot. So my suggestion is, if you can, join the team. And Carl was great in, you know, as chair. He moved it along, and he also let me ask a couple of questions. So I encourage others on the school committee to take a half hour and do that. And thank you, Carl, for moving it along.
Future agenda items?
We haven't gone through all the Subcommittee.
No, Executive, Superintendent.
Personnel.
Personnel and negotiations.
All right, I better put my glasses. There we go.
So now, yeah.
Personnel and negotiations, we are moving along. It is, as you know, a long procedure, and it is done in executive session. And we hope that we continue on what so far has been, hopefully, I could say, a productive direction. And sorry, that's all I could say.
And Evaluation Subcommittee?
Nothing yet.
And Executive Minutes review. Carl?
Yeah, well, we're, we're taking a short hiatus because.
Do you want to see, if they've been coming from the play?
Getting through.
Do you want me to send Kim?
But now, now I think we can work forward by, by some time next month. And, and have airbound Executive Minutes Subcommittee meet and hopefully get through most of the, the Executive Minutes that have not yet been considered by the full committee.
Bonnie?
Carl, if you can give a heads up because we now have, for Personnel and Negotiations, a number of minutes that we have to review and approve, and it was executive session, so it would go to you. So if we can coordinate, you know, the timing so that you can have them.
Yeah, 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 no, it's a good point, Bonnie, thank you. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Kim's going to see if the play people are ready to come entertain us.
Just need a little break.
Can you do the future agenda item?
It's not, it's, nothing's happening yet.
Is a question, is Ken Knox going to be able to continue to work with us? Do we know?
Well, yes. I mean, you know, the early college pedagogy training isn't going away. It might just be part of, the state is actually considering how to partner with Bard for that piece so that people across the state can access that kind of.
Oh, right.
In a different way because obviously where they're going. But I, I do believe he's planning on, he's still a liaison now, so, and was in District today for.
Right. Thank you.
So does he know that he's been hired by?
I don't, I don't know any of those things.
Member there, and they had to apply for positions, and I wondered if Ken had, if Ken knew that.
I don't know that anybody knows anything yet, but that's my understanding. My understanding is.
His intention is.
No, but it's a whole reapplication process, so I don't know any of the details of that.
Hopefully, hopefully that will work.
We need five minutes, okay.
Well, then, so one thing I can say for future agenda, if that's okay. I know we have the Regional Agreement Subcommittee, and we haven't done anything, and it's been such a busy between policy and budget and everything. But sometime between now such a busy between policy and budget and everything, but sometime between now and before, you know, May, I would love to get the School Committee people that are on that together so that we can start going through some of the points for Regional Agreement. And I notice, in particular, it's on my mind, because when we were working, going through policy, there were several items that we said, "Oh, well, all right, this is here, but it's also in the Regional Agreement," and do we, you know what I mean? Just to coordinate all the pieces, all, it came back to my mind. So, it would be nice to know what the pieces are that the School Committee people think that we need to, you know, pull the town reps together and do. I don't intend to get them involved maybe until fall, but just internally to kind of start that process of review.
Once again, I would suggest that maybe sending a note to the full School Committee about taking the time to review the Regional Agreement, and if they, you know, other people may pick up on things that they want us, as a Subcommittee, to look at. If you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a little hiatus until the play people can come and present for us.
They were just wrapping up, so.
You want some congratulations on Jay Hunter representing.
Oh, Districts? Yeah. He was so cute.
That was really. He auditioned for that?
Yes. So, he was the only, uh, we had three other students for the seniors, and he was the juniors, Junior Districts.
I hope he was proud of himself.
Oh, he was. He, he likes doing things like that. And his new thing is, he's going to hit everybody up to sell tickets for.
Yes, and he's already started.
He's already started.
He's already started. I have a lot of tickets.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they were all.
Oh, I thought maybe you would do the whole thing for us, because I'm sure you would never, because.
Yeah. I do not want to hear somewhere there's, you know, like, the songs they sing. It's like, it brings me back to when they did Frozen.
Uh-oh.
That was the worst year.
That, a lot of parents agreed with you on that if they heard the songs one more time.
That's okay. You want to hear Let It Go?
Oh, here we go.
Because I don't want to hear Let It Go anymore.
Every year, I say a lot of Let It Go.
Let It Go.
Sorry.
I'll write the mic. Hi, my name's Courtney English. Thank you for letting us be late. We just finished our final dress rehearsal for our 10th or 12th grade production of Little Shop of Whores, and I'm going to let these two guys take over.
Hi, I'm Seymour.
And I'm Audrey, and this is Audrey Two.
We would love it if you could come see our production this weekend, Friday at seven at, Friday and Saturday at seven, and Sunday at two.
You don't want to miss it. It's a killer show.
It really grows on you.
Filled with ecstasy.
These, uh, these, this is Logan, and that is Evelyn, and they are both seniors, and they have been on this stage since they were quite small. So, this is their final production. Uh, they've been huge assets to the Theater Department, being in nearly every production, so you definitely don't want to miss this one. Uh, we also have some lighting, which is very exciting. You've got to come check that out, because it does some really cool tricks. So, you definitely want to come to that. Any questions that you have, or anything for these guys?
Is that plant going to grow? Or can it not? Any tricks you can share?
Um, can dance.
I just saw these places somewhere else last year. I'm very intrigued.
Yeah, the, the plant, yeah, it eats interesting things. So, if you've not, if you've not seen it, it definitely is worth, it's worth coming to see. It's a nice B-rated, or B-horror type of musical, but with fun music, fun music for sure. Uh, we did a teaser today with some students in the high school, in the upper elementary, and they, you could hear a pin drop. They really, really liked it. We did the first 20 minutes, and they were, a lot of them went home and said, "Must go see it." So, they, it was, it was really well-received. And these guys, yeah. Yeah, we got a band, got a live band, too. It's nice to have a live band. It's a great musician, so it just really adds everything. They've worked very, very hard on this in a very short amount of time, because the middle school show just closed the first week in February, and these guys moved in, so they've only had about five or six weeks, and it's a big production, yes.
Having seen you over the years involved in theater and music and all, how does it feel now, going out as, as seniors, that this is your last production? And we'll not talk about your coach there, how she feels about it.
Um, I mean, I'm just eternally grateful for all the opportunities that the Theater Program, Musical and Shakespeare, over the, over the years. It's just been incredible.
You really get a commu, a sense of community with the Theater Program, and just the people that are in it. They're so fun. It's just, you make amazing friends. It's like a second family, and it just, it de-stresses your whole day, from school and everything like that. Yeah.
I mean, I always say the same, too. I mean, a lot of people go home at 3:00, and I stay till whatever time it is now, every single day, and it doesn't, it never feels like a chore. It's really fun to work with these guys, and it just really is, it's, I mean, the whole day is my favorite part, but I really like the, working with these guys. They just love it, and it, you know, it's, it's a really great, if you're going to have a 12-hour day, they, they really make it fun. They love it, and it, it just really makes your job great. I, I can't, I just, I can't say enough about the Theater Program. These kids are great. So, it's.
And thank you for willing to do all this.
Oh, yeah. Well, they, they make it worth it. They, they're so much, they're so much fun to work with, and they work so hard, so, makes it easy.
And the parents.
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, I hope, I hope to see you guys there.
You will.
If you'd like to see more of us and the rest of our cast, you should definitely come to all three shows.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Let's go into Executive Session.
Um, Executive Session.
Motion to enter as an Executive Session pursuant to MGL-C30A here on page 21, A3. To conduct strategy in respect to collective bargaining with various units of the SBRE as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and not return to open session.
Second.
Look good at this.
Roll call vote? Jim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay.